To our March 2, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Before I call this meeting to order, I would like to remind everyone in the audience to please either mute or turn off your phones. To the people that are joining us via the Internet or Zoom, if you do want to speak under call to the public, star nine or star six. Or if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand and we will recognize you under call to the public. So at this time, I will go ahead and call our meeting to order. And Mr. Hayes, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Next item is the adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager.
Good morning. There are no changes to the agenda at this time.
Great. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as posted and delivered.
Chair, move.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the agenda and allow the chair to deviate.
Okay. Do we hear a second?
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and our agenda is adopted. Call to the public. And I have three people here. The first one is Mr. Frank Cassidy. Frank, are you on there?
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I am here to speak about item H4, which is the dissolution of the Aliso Springs Domestic Water Improvement District, or DWID. It was created back in 2009 in association with the Casas de Guadalupe PAD. As you know, that PAD would have needed water. That development would have happened within the area that's covered by the Aliso Springs Property Owners Association, which commonly known as ASPOA area, Section 23. Back in 2009, they were planning to form the DWID and then expand the DWID to cover all of Section 23, the area covered by ASPOA. And as you know, with the Great Recession, the project never happened. It's now, it didn't comply with the conditions of rezoning, so it's basically not an active project. But the folks out in that area are still in need of water, so they hope to come forward with a new DWID to cover all of Section 23. And to do that, the cleanest way to do that is to clear the decks, if you will, of the old DWID, the 2009 DWID. So that's what this action that's on your agenda today would do. It would go ahead and dissolve the 2009 DWID to clear the decks so that the property owners out there can come forward with a new Domestic Water Improvement District, which will propose to be called the Trujillo Trail Domestic Water Improvement District. And it will cover all of the area that was covered by the 2009 DWID plus the rest of Section 23. So the new DWID will be about 645 acres, assuming the board approves that. The old DWID was about 109, or I should say is, until you dissolve it, about 109 acres. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of this.
Because it's called to the public, we can't act, but so I'm assuming you're supporting the dissolution of the water deal?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that I am representing the folks who are going to try to create the new DWID. So yes, we support the dissolution of the old DWID, and I'm an attorney in the Tucson area.
So your time is up, Frank. So noted. Thank you so much for sharing your comments with the board. We'll move on to the next person. That's Lauren, is it Nehaus? Are you on there, Lauren? Raise your hand, star nine, star six. Okay, so there's Lauren.
Star six unmute.
Okay, are you on, star six to unmute?
If you're on the computer.
Or if you're on the computer.
Hello, this is Lauren.
Hi, Lauren, go ahead.
I'm on the computer.
Yes, we can hear you. You've got three minutes. Go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you. I just wanted to take time to thank the Commissioner for the opportunity to speak on this ordinance. As per the changes yesterday that were approved by the Planning Commission, I wanted to offer Harvest Health and Recreation Support on the recreational marijuana ordinance with the lower separation between dispensaries and from parks and places of.
I get it.
That's all. I just wanted to make myself available for any questions that the Commissioner might have.
Great. Thank you very much, Lauren. Appreciate it. Before I recognize the person that has their hand up, there's another person that's on here. Kristi Warner Byer, are you on there? There she is, down here. If you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself for star six. I can see you on our screen, but there she is, right here, that one. Can you unmute, Kristi? If you're on the phone? She's on the computer. If you can unmute, if you're on the computer. I guess, there. Are you unmuted? No, I don't see it. Okay, well, I see Mr. Steve McEwen is on the phone. If you can unmute Steve. You have three minutes. Are you there?
Good morning.
Good morning. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I come before you today with the encouragement of many constituents to discuss our concerns with your tactics and abuse of authorities continue to shut down our county. Proverbs 29:2, "When the righteous increase, the people rejoice; but when the wicked rule, the people groan." We would submit that you have no authority to lock down the county under the premises of protecting its citizens. No one is responsible for another citizen's health. No one has the authority to compromise our God-given liberties. Every week, evidence is revealing that test figures and hospital deaths are grossly overstated. As elected officials, you are responsible for the smothering of our county, economy of our county. You are responsible for contributing to triple increase in mental health issues. You are responsible for the developmental scarring of our children. You are responsible for violating the law of Arizona by not having a county health org to assist you in making these decisions. Your choice to use limited consultation with the county health administrator falls far short of credibility. We insist that you end your unwarranted executive mandate and open our businesses, schools, and public property without further restrictions immediately. If your comments don't, if our comments don't move you to action, perhaps the words of Congressman Paul Gosar will inspire you to act. And I quote, "Last week, the nation's top health agency, the CDC, announced that we will all have known to be true. There is strong evidence that in-person classrooms are safe and schools across our nation should reopen. At the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, it was thought best that in-classroom schools be closed for the safety of our students and teachers. Unfortunately, many schools remain closed today, despite CDC guidelines revising otherwise. Our students are missing out on key socialization, education, nutritional health services, and mental health emergency visits. When it comes to reopening schools, Mr. Biden and Democrats profess that the following science to be true, but here are the facts. In January, the CDC recommended sending schools back to school, and Mr. Biden's father, the Kaiser-Pfaff, echoed these false."
So you've got 30 seconds left, so please wrap it up.
I am, and please don't interrupt me. I know what time it is, sir. We would ask that you change your tactics and open up our counties so we can get back to business, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Kristi, are you on there?
Look at me, I have to clock.
Yeah, okay. So you can go ahead and mute Mr. McEwen. Kristi, are you on there? Okay, well, I'm gonna go two more times. Ms. Kristi Warner Byer, if you're on the phone. Star six, if you're on your computer, please unmute yourself.
Yes, I just figured it out.
Great, thank you. Hi, Kristi, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, my screen went to something else.
Okay, you have three minutes, so go ahead.
Yes, I'm just speaking in favor of a proposition on changing the distances on dispensaries, and I think it's a great idea to change it, and I am looking at moving into the community and would support that.
Well, thank you so much for calling in, and we look forward to welcoming you as a new resident to Santa Cruz County. Nice fish, by the way.
Thank you. I'm proud of it.
Great, thank you. Okay. Anyone else under call to the public? If you're on your computer, raise your hand. If you're on the phone, star nine or star six. I don't see, oh, Thomas Galvin. Thomas, three minutes. If you can unmute yourself, if you're on the, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. This is Thomas Galvin with Rose Law Group. I'll be very brief. I just want to echo the comments made earlier by Ms. Nehaus and by Ms. Byer. We believe that the board's decision yesterday to recommend approval with those lowered separation requirements is a good result for the county, and we urge the passage of this ordinance today, and we happen to answer any questions if necessary. Thank you for your time. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Thomas. Anyone else under call to the public? Going once. Going twice. Yes. Oh, so Supervisor Miletta, he wants to do something under call to the public. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Good morning.
Good morning.
It is with great honor that I am going to represent, to present this young man with an award again. For the second year, he was state champ, a cross-country state champ, and the award this year reads as follows. Roshan Tinoco Miranda, 2020 Arizona AIA State Cross Country Champion, Division III, and the time is 15:32:32, Rio Rico High School. We are proud of you and wish you continued success. I think you still have track season, and we wish you lots of luck during track season. And we'd like to give you a couple of minutes if you want to just talk about your current races and what you plan on doing, if there's any colleges that are, I'm pretty sure there are some interested in you and continuing your great cross-country success. Congratulations. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for sharing this moment with me. I greatly appreciate it. And yeah, I'm definitely grateful for all your efforts and support in being able to continue our season, first with cross and how that went, and now our track season. Thank you for everything you guys have done there on your part, and I'm definitely looking forward to being able to, hopefully in the near future, not only myself, but have my team inspire them to keep on growing and keep doing big things, as it has been in our schools past, which has been great to have as well. So thank you guys very much for this time, this morning, and thank you, Mr. Rui, once again for this work. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
What year are you?
I'm a senior.
Okay, what do you plans for next year?
Yeah, as far as that goes, as most of you might have an idea, things have been really unfortunate with visiting and trying to get to go to schools and see how it is over there, especially out of state. But I have been a bit more fortunate with in-state options, that being GCU, UVA, ASU, and they've, we've been communicating with them. As of now, I have been able to get a trip up to GCU, and that was last weekend. That was my first, you can quote-unquote official visit, and it went pretty well. I'm glad to see the change. It's definitely a big change in lifestyle from here to jump over to Phoenix, as you might imagine, but it's definitely something that I'd be preparing for and be ready to take on. Got first.
Great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
And good luck this track season and the rest of your senior year.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, Supervisor Miletta. Anyone else under call to the public? Going once. Going twice. Okay, we'll move on then. We'll go to current events. Yes.
Supervisor Reese, I believe there's.
Okay, so who is O16? Please identify yourself.
That's Jim Kennedy.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Three minutes.
Yes, I just wanted to very quickly speak to the change on 2021-3. Even though it was recommended that they reduce the setback distances, we operated a medical marijuana dispensary in Santa Cruz County for a few years, and at the time, there were no setbacks from the churches like there are in the current proposal. So by our way of thinking, what this actually does is make it more restrictive for marijuana dispensaries and the like rather than less restrictive. And we would like to continue, we would like to be able to reopen our facility for a adult-use facility, but there are currently churches which would be within the 1,300 and change feet where it was not a problem we coexisted with the community previously.
Okay.
So that's the.
So thank you for your comments, and we will address those through our public hearing and then subsequently whatever action this board takes. So, thank you, sir. Anyone else under call to the public? Anyone else under call to the public? Star six, star nine? Or if you're on Zoom, there's a little hand you can raise there on your computer? Okay, so seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Then you don't see anything there, Juan? Okay, at this time then, we'll go to item D, Current Events. Board of Supervisors, Vice Chairman Bracker.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. Thank you very much. It was a busy couple of weeks. Right after our board meeting last week, we had a small counties meeting. On Thursday, we had a County Supervisor Association meeting, discussed a lot of the bills that are trying to move through the legislature. Then last week, we had a, there was a prep session sponsored by Consul General Biedebock from Nogales Sonora. It was a prep session for the Bi-National Borders and Bridges Meeting. So basically, the three large border communities, ports of entry in Arizona, Douglas, San Luis, and Nogales, had a chance to present their case for the things that they wanted the Consul Generals to represent for our communities at the Bi-National Borders and Bridges Meeting. Also, we had a Border Counties Coalition Meeting. One of the large, big topics of that meeting is what's going on with the migrants coming up from down south and how they're going to impact the border, the border communities, and the way Border Patrol is planning on handling those releases into our community. So there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes to deal with, to deal with it, and that's what I have to report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
I also have one more thing. The Wisdom family lost their son and the brother, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that loss.
Great, thank you. Our condolences to the family.
Our condolences to the family.
Supervisor Miletta.
Mr. Chair, again, good morning. A few items to report. LPC has been meeting every Friday, as you know. I want to congratulate Supervisor Vice Chairman Bracker because the bill we were pushing against, HB 2447, was defeated. I think his efforts along with our team efforts and including the Port Authority and the protest people to help defeat it. Congratulations. There's a lot of, just a heads up, there's a lot of bad election bills we need to keep an eye on, and winery bills too. And I want to thank CSA for keeping us up to date and sending us emails and asking us to oppose or support bills as needed. One item I forgot to do is I forgot to congratulate Roshan Tinoco's, Miranda's cross-country coach, Jolaine Palumbo was his cross-country coach, and I want to congratulate her and commend her. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Miletta. A few things from me. Number one is first, I would like to give our condolences to our county attorney, Judge Silva. His grandmother passed away this past week. I knew Mrs. Silva. She, same neighborhood I grew up. She was a friend of my mom. I know they would get together and pray for all of us all the time. So I want to, I want to give my deepest condolences to the Silva family, along with the Wisdom family on their loss. The second is I had the opportunity to sit down and meet with Steve McEwen on some issues that he had raised about elections and information and openings of schools and our courthouse. I did speak briefly with Ms. Hunley this morning because some of those things, I would be more comfortable that the, our counsel have an opportunity to address those. So with that, I think that's all I have, and we'll go on to item two, Managers' Report. Madam Manager, good morning.
Good morning again, Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. Over the past two weeks, I have done a lot of virtual continuing education. I also virtually attended the county, Small County Caucus and the CSA Board of Directors, as Supervisor Bracker mentioned. The county managers had follow-up meetings with the governor's office regarding vaccine distribution, and there's not much new to report on that, but we continue to meet every two weeks with the governor's office in an effort to get more vaccines and then just more timely notice of our vaccines. That creates a lot of problems when we get our distribution notice on Tuesday and want to start getting those in arms by Monday. So I also met with CSA, our County Supervisors Association, on the proposed bills, many of which you have mentioned. Earlier today, we are following a lot of those very closely and opposing or supporting as required. And also, I just wanted to let you know that we successfully last week kind of made up for the lost week that we had. There was, two weeks ago, we had no vaccines come into the county, as you all remember, due to the weather in Memphis, and that's where our vaccines shipped from. So we doubled the efforts last week and successfully got all of those shots in arms in a one-week period over the two weeks. And for the next two weeks, we plan to operate Tuesday through Friday for this week, and then Tuesday through Saturday, and these are mostly second shots. So just wanted to give you a brief update on the vaccination clinic, and that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you, Jennifer.
Madam Manager, how many shots were delivered last week?
Last week, we, between the city rec building and Mariposa, we did almost just under 3,000 shots, and we plan to do right at that amount this week as well as next week.
Thank you very much.
Did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair. No, I just would like to point a personal privilege. I want to say hi to my beautiful wife. She's at our meeting for the first time in a while because she's now retired, so decided to stop by, and thanks for stopping by, baby.
You mean, you're not having her do things around the house that you would have to do? I mean, you know, she's retired, you're not.
We're doing it, actually.
Joan, Dr. Miletta, thank you for joining us. I also want to thank you for volunteering down at the vaccination clinics. I know that it's cool that we have a lot of people that have been volunteering to make sure that our residents have that opportunity to receive the vaccine. So thank you, welcome. You're always welcome, and you know, twice a month, so we'll be here. Great.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Dr. Miletta, I'd also like to thank you for the efforts that you've put into volunteering at the Vaccination Center. It has really taken a huge effort from the volunteers and our staff to make this thing run so smoothly, and I will tell you the feedback from everybody who's visited that center is that it is running very smoothly. So congratulations on your efforts. Thank you very much for volunteering your time for the community.
Thanks. And the good news I heard is your son may become a sun devil, so that's even better.
Killing us.
We'll move on to item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash Investment Expenditure and Revenue Reports. Mauricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $12,53,380 with an investment amount of $1.7 million. The road fund has an overall balance of $2,205,870 with an investment amount of $814,000. The flood control district has an overall balance of $2,853,545 with an investment amount of $1.8 million. The jail district has an overall balance of $2,448,142 with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $31,792,501 with an investment amount of $7,298,000 for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $9,227,903.
Great. Any questions, Mr. Chavez? If not, I see there's a hand up. I'm going to go ahead and go back under call to the public, and the last three numbers of the phone number are 1-8-5. If you're on the phone, star six, star nine, or if you're on a Zoom call, please unmute yourself.
Identify yourself.
And identify yourself. Star six to unmute yourself. Yes, we can hear you. Please identify yourself. You have three minutes.
Okay, Mr. I am Maria Valdén.
Yes.
I am a resident of Nogales, and one of the mother of three, and I would like to address some issues concerning the handling of the pandemic in our county. As a person who tested positive for COVID, I experienced the effects of the virus as well as the process of testing and self-isolation. After testing positive, I was contacted by the Arizona Department of Health Services in which I was given instructions to isolate for two weeks. I was informed that after two weeks, we may still test positive for the virus but no longer considered contagious, which is why they do not recommend retesting within three months. However, like many families and friends who tested positive, they were required by their employees to retest until a negative test came back in order to return to work. Here's where I see a huge issue, and the reason I question whether it was reported Here's where I see a huge issue, and the reason I question whether it was reported is indeed accurate. How many of the positive tests are by the same person testing multiple times? Also, another concern of mine is how accurate are the tests performed on us? I noted in my COVID test results that the testing kit used for Mariposa Community Health is not FDA-approved. How accurate are these tests? What's the possibility of we found positive? Thirdly, I would like to know how many of our positive cases are coming from people that actually live in the county? I am aware that some people from outside the county are able to test within locations inside county lines. So, are these being reported into our county's population? All these questions lead me to believe two things. There needs to be more transparency in the presentation of the confirmed cases, and something needs to be done about employees this regarding CDC guidelines for retesting inaccurately, especially when ADHS isn't addressing this to the public through its stats. Our schools have been closed because of these numbers, but why is it nobody addressing these issues, questioning the accuracy before making policies based on these numbers? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your call. And Steve, you already had your turn, so we're just going to move on. So, we'll go ahead and go to Item E. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to recess our regular session and convene into the Flood Control District. So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hayes, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You should have a copy of the report there in front of you. I do have two items to update you on. First is Item Number Five in regards to the remapping work that we're doing along the Gilberto-Vencejo-Agua Fria area. We've ended up splitting out the Aguafria portion of that as a separate letter of map provision, and that one's moving through. So, the advertisement for that ran today in the Nogales International, so hopefully here in the next couple of months, we'll get that changed. That's basically going to affect the area along the West Frontage Road from Ramonote down through the Mercado area, the Circulo Mercado area, with a little bit of change. The Gilberto one, they're still trying to nail down, there was apparently some issues with some panels that were either not placed correctly to begin with, or somebody keeps going out and messing with the control point. They're still trying to nail down which of those is what's happening, but they need to get that control figured out before they can get that through. So, hopefully that'll be taken care of here in the next week or two. Item Number Eight, we ended the month of February with 201 requests for information on the floodplain status of properties, seven of which came from the town of Patagonia and 18 from the city of Nogales.
Great. Gentlemen?
Thank you very much.
Item Two, Monthly Report from the City of Nogales.
Did not receive a report from the city of Nogales.
Item Three, Monthly Report from the Patagonia.
Did not receive a report from the town of Patagonia.
Okay. At this time, public comments on the Flood Control District. *6, so raise your hand. Seeing none, then we'll go on to Item Five, Discussion. Oh, that's, we're going to do the public hearing and then come back to that. So, at this time, Chair will entertain a motion then to adjourn our Flood Control District, convene regular session. So moved. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. And I'll entertain a motion to convene into the Jail District. So moved. Here a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item One, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Agreement Amendment with Summit Food Services Management's 43% Consumer Price Index increased to the current price to feed juveniles and adult detention inmates. Jennifer, everything good? Kim?
Everything's in order, and the sheriff's office worked with Kim to approve the amendment.
Right. Chair will entertain a motion. Now, second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously and approved. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our Jail District and convene regular session. Here a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item, Action Item H. One. Discussion, Possible Action for Authorization to Reclassify and Fill A, C-Crio Administrative Assistant Position to C-Crio Secretary Position, and B, Office Manager Position to Chief Deputy Recorder Position. Everything in order? Chair will entertain a motion for both A and B. So moved. Here a second. Discussion.
Yes. Madam Manager, C-Crio is a grant-funded position?
That is correct, Supervisor Bracker.
Okay. And then the Office Manager Position for the Chief Deputy Recorder, is that budgeted?
Yes, and it's a general fund position.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item Two, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve the Renaming of Panorama Court to Tejano Spring Road in Rio Rico. Everything in order? Okay. Second. Good. And whoever asked for it has to pay for the nameplate, right? Or do we do that? I know, I know Jesus is not here, so I thought that was part of it. Anyway, doesn't matter. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item Three, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Adult Education One-Time Additional Funding Award by the Arizona Department of Education in the amount of $35,000. Chair will entertain a motion. So moved. Here a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item Four, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2103-03 Dissolving the Aliso Springs Domestic Water Improvement District. And everything's in order. Frank? Chair will entertain a motion. Move to approve. Here a second. A second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The resolution is approved and the dissolving the Aliso Springs Domestic Water Improvement District. We'll move on to Item Number Five, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2021-4 Authorizing the Renewal of Santa Cruz County's Membership in the Local, Arizona Local Government Employee Benefit Trust and Appointing the Trustees to Serve on the Board of Directors During the Renewal Period. And I'm assuming that's you and Sonia, right?
That's correct, Supervisor Reese.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve. And then the discussion, this is done every three years?
That is correct. We're in a health insurance trust with...
Hold on. Here a second. Discussion. Okay. Discussion.
Thank you. Sorry. We're in a health insurance trust pool with five other counties, the smaller counties in Arizona. So, this is our health insurance, and the membership starts July 1st and is good for three fiscal years.
Great. Great. So, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion comments?
Yes, I have. Discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Sometimes during, in this health insurance pool, people are having issues getting renewals of their prescriptions, things that are being recommended by their doctors. This pool is challenging. I don't believe that this insurance company should be getting between the patient and their doctor, and it is a concern of mine, and so I just want to make that notice.
Absolutely.
In the future, you know, in the two years, I would like, if this problem is not rectified, then I would like us to explore a different option.
Good point.
Well noted.
Good. Yeah. Yeah, definitely. I know that they meet to discuss options and stuff, but I think it's a good comment, and hopefully relate it to the pool. So, any other comments? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item Six, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Proclamation Declaring March 2021 as Santa Cruz County Government Employee Appreciation Month. Chair will entertain a motion. So moved. Here a second. Discussion. Just briefly, I think it's important that we recognize the hard work of the staff, and I know that some of them have been going beyond what they're required to do during this pandemic, so I think it's important that we recognize their efforts. Any organization is only as good as its employees are, and I think we have a lot of great, hard-working employees in Santa Cruz County, so I think the residents should be proud of the staff that we have here, so... Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I definitely agree with your comments, and I'd like to see us down the road and through the things, yes, in a, when we get in a better situation with a pandemic, maybe have our hamburger...
And hot dog cookout.
Hot dog cookout. I think my two colleagues miss cooking, and we look forward to it and doing it sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. Any comments, Mr. Bracker? Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I think, you know, as any organization, your employees are the backbone. They are the people that are delivering the services to our constituents, and I'd like to acknowledge the fact that, you know, this has been a tough year, and everybody has been working really, really hard and working through the issues. So, Jennifer, congratulations on what you've been doing with your staff, and thank you very much to all the staff for all their efforts.
Great. So, any further discussion or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item Seven, Discussion, Possible Action, Recommendation of Approval or Disapproval of Application for Liquor License for Family Dollar Store Number 26848 in Rio Rico. Everything in order? Chair will entertain a motion. Move to approve. Here a second. Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. And that is for approval, right?
That is for approval.
Yes. So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item Eight, Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Bond for Duplicate Warrants Interim Clerk. Let's see. A, number 3666223 in the amount of $334.80 dated 11/10/2020 payable to Tucson Alternator, and B, number 2096330 in the amount of $1,564 dated 12/15/2020 payable to Arizona PRN. Chair will entertain a motion. Move to approve. Here a second. Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item Nine, Tax Valuation Adjustments A and B. A, 11452214 Pablo Vasquez Resolution Number 56045, and B, 11508375 Marco A Espinoza, and Jennifer S Estrada Resolution Number 56047. Chair will entertain a motion. So moved. Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item Ten, Approval of Minutes of Two, 16/2021. So moved. Here a second. Discussion. Bless you.
Bless you.
Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item Eleven, Demands. Mr. Maleta.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $639,893.98, of which $154,638.32 are from the general fund.
Here a second. Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item Twelve is related to the public hearings. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to recess our regular session and convene into the public hearing. So moved. Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are now in the public hearing. Item One, Ordinance Number 2021-02 Amending the Santa Cruz County Flood Plain and Erosion Hazardous Management Ordinance Number 2001-3 to Meet Update State and Federal Requirements for Local Ordinances. John, good morning again.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're coming to you today for this hearing and subsequent potential action on updating the floodplain ordinance for the Santa Cruz County. Basically, what we are proposing with this update is the insertion of Section 4.3K, which has been requested by both the state and federal governments to basically put in a time limit so that the floodplain manager or administrator of the county shall notify the administrator of FEMA about changes that result in changes of the floodplain. The language is actually in there. The other change that we have proposed is just an updating of the format of the ordinance. Basically, it's the electronic version of the ordinance so that when somebody is looking at the electronic version in the table of contents, they can click on that and go immediately to that section instead of having to page through.
So, making it a lot easier.
Yes, sir.
Great. Gentlemen, any comments, questions, concerns?
No. These both sound like very common sense, good changes, so thank you very much, John.
So, comments from the public? Anyone wishing to comment? If you're on the phone, *6 to unmute. If you're on the computer, you can raise your hand. Okay. I don't see any. Do you, gentlemen, want anything? Okay. Thank you, John. We'll move on then to Item Number Two, Ordinance Number 2021-03 Revising Article II and Article IX of the Santa Cruz County Zoning and Development Code and Adding a New Article 30 to Provide Definitions and Use Standards in County Zoning Districts for Adult Use, Recreational Marijuana Establishments, Nonprofit Medical Marijuana Dispensaries, Dual-Licency Establishments, Marijuana Off-Site Cultivation, Cultivation Facilities, and Marijuana Off-Site Manufacturing Facilities. Frank, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to go over this with you. So, that was a mouthful. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You got it. All right. So, moving on to the background. Essentially, on November 30th, 2020, the Secretary of State certified Arizona voters' approval of Proposition 207 in the 2020 general election. With the approval of Smart and Safe Arizona Act, it has become effective to govern the adult use regulation and taxation of marijuana in the state. Existing medical marijuana licensees will be automatically granted a license to sell recreational cannabis at their current dispensary locations. Because there are currently no dispensaries in Santa Cruz County, there'd be no recreational dispensary licenses automatically issued in Santa Cruz County under this provision. Under a different provision, Proposition 207, each county in Arizona will be allocated up to two recreational licenses to ensure that each county has at least two total dispensaries. Because a total statewide limit of recreational dispensaries under 207 is the same limit as medical marijuana dispensaries under the Arizona Medical Marijuana Act, Santa Cruz County, including all of its municipalities, will only have a maximum of two recreational dispensaries for the foreseeable future. If you go to the next slide, it's just, it's a little bit hard to see in this size, but this is all the information that I gave to you guys and the staff report as well. Essentially, this just gives you a chart, a table, essentially of the designations of where the marijuana establishments and nonprofit medical dispensaries will be allowed to be located, either as a permitted use or as a conditional use, with a conditional use permit. And so, for example, just taking one of these zones and going over it, for example, if we look at the Neighborhood Commercial District, which is Zone B1, if you look at the off-site cultivation and manufacturing, those are not permitted uses in B1 because generally those are more space-intensive and things like that. But if you're looking at marijuana dual-l license establishment, essentially the retail locations, and you're looking at the dispensaries for the nonprofit medical marijuana, those would be allowed with a conditional use permit. And then as, you know, intuitively, right, as the land, the zoning districts allow for more intensive uses... for more intensive uses, they become more more permissible. So moving on to the next slide. Related to statutory guidance, Arizona revised statute Title 36, Public Health and Safety, Chapter 28.1, Arizona Medical Marijuana Act, Chapter 28.2, Responsible Adult Use of Marijuana and Arizona Administrative Code Title IX, Chapter 17, provides definitions, rules, and regulations for nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation sites, adult recreational marijuana and dual license establishments. Pursuant to ARS 36-2806.01, cities, towns, and counties may enact reasonable zoning regulations that limit the use of land for registered nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries to specified areas in the manner provided in Title IX, Chapter Four, Article 6.1, and Title XI, Chapter Six, Article Two. Next slide, please. So pursuant to 362857, localities marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities, a locality may enact reasonable zoning regulations that limit the use of land for marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities to specific areas, limit the number of marijuana establishments or marijuana testing facilities or both, prohibit marijuana establishments or marijuana testing facilities or both, regulate the time, place, and manner or of marijuana establishment and marijuana testing facility operations, establish reasonable restrictions on public signage regarding marijuana marijuana establishments and marijuana testing facilities, six, prohibit or restrict delivery within its jurisdiction. B, a county may also exercise its authority pursuant to subsection A of the section, only in unincorporated areas of the county. C, a locality may not enact any ordinance, regulation, or rule that is more restrictive than a comparable ordinance, regulation, or rule that applies to nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries. And just to kind of clarify what that means, that last provision essentially is talking about, so right now, we have an existing medical marijuana ordinance. It's not saying that we can't create a, an ordinance that that addresses marijuana establishments that can't be more restrictive than our existing ordinance. In this new proposed ordinance, we're providing new standards for nonprofit medical marijuana as well in response to the state updating the statute. So we're addressing both at the same time, and the, essentially, the equivalent uses of both adult recreational use marijuana and nonprofit medical marijuana, and the different cultivation, production, and manufacturing, and then retail type uses of each of those are essentially permitted, or permitted with a conditional use in the same zones. So those are basically in parity with each other in the way that we have drafted this ordinance. The next slide, please. So economic considerations. The County Supervisors Association issued a report in August 2020 projecting an annual annual revenues in Santa Cruz County at $379,900. An analysis provided by an interested company projects that a single dispensary in Santa Cruz County would likely gross approximately $7 million a year, all of which would be subject to sales tax and an additional 16% excise tax, and which would employ approximately 25 full-time positions. Cultivation and manufacturing activities while not generating immediate tax revenue create additional employment opportunities, as we've seen. Additional considerations, some of the potential adverse land use impacts associated with the retail aspects include traffic control and interference to adjacent businesses. A lot of you have probably seen the news and stuff like that about, you know, what's been going on in Tucson since they've allowed some of these dual licensee establishments to begin operating. The difference between some of those population centers in Santa Cruz County is that we don't currently have any dispensaries or retail locations. So, you know, keeping in mind some of the issues that are associated with traffic and disruptions to adjacent businesses, we obviously can take into account and look at mitigating factors as we're evaluating any proposed development plans for these types of activities. Next slide, please. So public comment, all statutory noticing requirements have been met. So, and this was as of yesterday, but we'd only received essentially one email, and then our attorney's office got a phone call. And it was related to the distance requirements. Essentially, there's a provision in Section 3004.3 that requires any medical marijuana establishments or nonprofit medical dispensaries to be 5,280 feet, which is a mile away from each other. We've received a number of different application, applications while this ordinance has been pending, and we've been working on it in my office. And the, we've only had a few comments related to the distance issue. So generally speaking, it seems to not be a problem, but it depends. I think, you know, if there are people with pre-existing sites or something like that, I think they're, you know, looking at ways to reduce that, which which also makes sense. And then, and then yesterday, so I'll get to this planning commission recommendation and expound on that a little bit further. So the planning commission recommendation, essentially, I'm going to skip past the staff recommendation and and just go to the planning commission recommendation, go back. So planning commission recommendation, oh, sorry, go back a slide. Yep, there you go. Um, there you go. Yep. So the planning commission recommendation ultimately took into account some of those comments, and essentially, there are two, two major sort of distance standards. One is the distance from a dispensary to another dispensary or a marijuana establishment to another marijuana establishment, and that's the 5280 I just mentioned. The other distance requirement is the distance from a school, place of worship, park. And currently, in our existing code, that is a standard that's always existed, and it's been 2,640 feet, which is a half of a mile. And we we maintained that standard in this proposed code. However, yesterday, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, again, there were some public comments related to that, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation was to adopt the ordinance as presented, and for the Board of Supervisors to consider amendments ultimately that that cut both of those standards in half. So that would mean that staff would prepare a future text amendment that ultimately would, if this ordinance were adopted today, as is, the staff would prepare a future text amendment ultimately that would reflect that the 5280 feet would be divided in half to 2,640, and that the 2,640 from schools, places of worship, and parks would be divided to 1,320 feet in terms of a distance standard. So the staff recommendation is that, staff recommends approval of the text amendments to include Article Two, Article Nine, and Article Thirty as presented. And if the Board of Supervisors agrees with the planning commission recommendations to send direct staff ultimately, and we'd be happy to work on any amendments to reduce the distances. And real quick, just before I finish, I just want to say thanks a lot to Ms. Hunley in the attorney's office. We kind of had to put this together relatively quickly, but it was a solid team effort, and we had to kind of work overtime a little bit, but I'm glad we were able to do that, and we got a solid product. So I wouldn't have been able to do it without her help, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I know. I was looking at all the legalese that's up there, so I'm glad you're on staff and you're able to do that. So the commission's okay with it, and then upon adoption, as you're saying, then something can be included in the motion to to amend some of that text to comply with the shorter distances as you're as you're recommending. Just just one question, and I know this is always, and I don't know if you can answer it or not, because under the federal eyes, they still consider marijuana an illegal drug, and and when you're paying taxes, I mean, it's a cash business. And even when you come to pay taxes, I mean, are they going to be transporting or paying the sales tax? I mean, how is that going to work until, you know, something's changed where they can legally have a bank and they can draw a check? I mean, I don't know if you have any thoughts or comments, but, you know, could see people coming up here with suitcases full of cash to pay their obligations. So just just my concern.
Supervisor Ruiz, we we don't have, you know, yesterday, that a similar question came up, and essentially, we had a, an interested party from from Copper State Farms, Five Simmington, essentially spoke to that point, and essentially, you know, was talking about how the Arizona Department of Revenue, basically, with these marijuana establishments and the medical marijuana dispensaries, they're very heavily regulated. And so while, and from my understanding, and again, I'm not an expert on the finance side of this this particular business, but from what the explanation was yesterday was ultimately, in the beginning, it was a lot more difficult, but essentially, some of those standards have been.
Eased up?
Yeah, have been increasingly more relaxed with respect, I mean, the standards in terms of what they're required to do is still very heavily regulated. However, the banking side of it, from what I understand, has has eased up a bit.
Okay, well, that's good, so. You concur?
I don't actually have any information about that.
Okay. Well, it's just something that I know that some colleagues throughout the country where that has happened, it has been an issue, but if it's if it's resolved here, then that's 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 fine. Go go ahead, Supervisor Maletta.
Frank, thank you for all your due diligence and and for working on this with the planning commission. I I just want to, for my own sake, I want a clarification. The way it stands, we we currently have less restrictive as far as distances are concerned than the state. Is that is that what it is?
So the state doesn't, no, so the so the state essentially offers some guidance, and ultimately, what it says is that a locality may adopt, you know, particular standards with related to these specific uses. And so it's a little bit up to, basically, they leave it up to the locality to be able to develop those standards. The 2,000, the 2,640 feet from churches, schools, and and parks, that essentially, well, the churches and schools essentially was from the, that standard was from the existing code. So that's been in there for nonprofit medical marijuana establishment, dispensaries, and cultivation sites since the county adopted those, I believe in 2006. So that's, that's been a standard that's been accepted for, you know, since, okay, since it's been in, yeah.
Supervisor Brecker.
I'd also like to commend you, Frank, and also Kim, our civil attorney, for all the work that they've done on this code. You've brought us a very comprehensive document, and it's very easy to understand, and so.
Thank you.
And and one other thing I I had a concern on, you know, you you worry about accidents, about people being impaired and stuff. And so I I put in a call to the sheriff, and it kind of gave me a little relief, because the sheriff mentioned that they have a scientific technique now, where it's called the HGN, horizontal gazed nistagnus. And basically, they they held a training here where his officers were trained, and they also trained other officers here, where just by looking at the person, they can figure this person is impaired, and they bring him in for testing, further testing. So, you know, that gave me a little relief, because we do have technology for alcohol, and I'm pretty sure down the road, we'll see better tools, hopefully.
Absolutely. Frank, thank you. As you heard, under a call to the public, we had, I think, three, two, two residents plus one of the attorneys that was was in support of this. So if there are no questions from the board, anyone in the public wishing to make a comment at this time in regards to this ordinance? If you're on the phone, star six to unmute. If you're on Zoom, just press your, raise your hand so we can acknowledge you. Okay. So 601, who's 601?
Identify yourself.
Yes, sir, this is Jim Kennedy. I actually made a similar comment earlier, and one of the things that's been thrown around here is that the setback from schools, churches, and parks is similar to the setback which was required for medical marijuana establishments previously. However, that's not the case. Medical marijuana establishments require a setback from schools. So what, and I can, was looking at, you know, the red line section, you can see where it's crossing out the, the marijuana dispensaries setback from schools. It makes no mention of churches or parks. And so the concern that we had was that we had operated a medical marijuana establishment in Santa Cruz County sufficiently setback from schools, but no requirement for setback from churches. And so this would be a requirement that would be more restrictive and potentially prevent us from essentially reopening the same store that we had down there previously.
And and Mr. Kennedy, right? I think that's what Frank was was suggesting, and that because the ordinance that was established was probably back when we, the first miracle marijuana passed in the state that's was established, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission met yesterday, and they decided to bring back some of the setbacks to to be more in in compliance. So I think, I think our community development is well aware of that, and I think before they can do or change anything, we need to approve our ordinance, and then those ordinances at some point in time can 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 have the text changed to comply with what Mr. Dillon was was presenting. So I don't know if that answers your question or not, Mr. Kennedy.
Well, I'm I'm not sure that it does. The concern I have isn't so much about the distance of the setbacks, it's what it's setting back from. And, you know, the setback from churches is a new requirement. And I don't understand necessarily why a setback from churches would be something that would be.
So let me let me have Mr. Dillon respond to that question, Mr. Kennedy. Frank, and then I'll go to you, Mr. Brecker.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Mr. Kennedy, for your comment.
Yes.
So essentially, you know, as we're moving through these ordinances, and we're looking at kind of ways to improve them, and and essentially looking at best practices and what's going on throughout other jurisdictions in the state, and we're looking at kind of, you know, what, generally speaking, the common standards are, we aren't necessarily beholden to stick to the same regulations that we've had in the past. We can essentially update our ordinance, and that's what we're proposing here today. The purpose of this was to look at standards essentially for both the adult use recreational side and the nonprofit medical marijuana side, based on the state statutes, and kind of look at how we can draw parallels between both so that they can operate in parity, while considering sort of, you know, the the potential land use impacts of both of those activities, because essentially, I read that provision that says they can't be more restrictive than, one can't be more restrictive than the other, right? So we're taking a comprehensive look at all of this. And so, for example, and just really quickly, if you guys would have continued to operate your nonprofit medical marijuana dispensary continuously, it would have been considered a legal nonconforming use if the supervisors adopt this with, you know, essentially, the more restrictive provisions. However, if the supervisors adopt this today, which essentially is for the purpose of adult use and recreational marijuana is the most important part, if they choose to adopt it, that means that those items will be permitted or permitted as a conditional use in the county if they give staff direction to revisit some of the standards and and look at making them less restrictive, then those issues can be addressed. However, if they they don't accept it as presented, then essentially, none of those uses will be allowed in the county except for the existing medical marijuana that's allowed in the current ordinance, so.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Kennedy?
Fair enough.
Great, good. Now, I saw Damian Kennedy had his hand up. I guess not anymore, no comments, so there you are.
I'm hitting the button too many times, I'm sorry.
Okay, go, you're muted again, Damian.
I'm muted again.
You've got three minutes, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for your time. There was a comment by Mr. Dillon that in the previous iteration of these rules, that the churches and parks was part of that, and that's why it is in this one. And I understand the the reasoning now, but it was not in previous iterations of these rules.
Sorry, no, let me clarify that. The churches and the places of worship and park standards was not in the previous one. The schools, all I was speaking to was the distance for the schools. We updated the provision to include places of worship and parks. And that's something basically just because we're looking at best practices and we're revisiting the standards in general. There are a lot of things that ultimately, we've had to add some clarity to and update with respect to the performance standards of both because we have to consider the entire adult use recreational side of it as well. So we want to make sure, you know, so we want to make sure that they're both operating in parity. This is no longer just looking at the nonprofit medical marijuana uses that we were back in 2006. So, but again, as I mentioned to Mr. Kennedy previously in the previous comment, if the supervisors choose to adopt this as presented, they can always give staff direction to revisit the standards and look at ways to make them less restrictive, and we're happy to do that.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, and it absolutely does. I just wanted to clarify that, and I do appreciate the extended rules that Dillon has put together for this. It is much more explanatory than it previously was, so thank you for that and kudos for creating it.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
Yes, but I don't know how to request.
Yes, you're, please identify yourself, sir.
My name is Jean-Paul Genet.
Okay. Go ahead, sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity. I was one of the principals involved in GreenMed, the medical facility that was located in Rio Rico. I wanted to point out that during the time that we were located, several years, we did our due diligence. I went and visited everybody in the community where we were located, and also put articles in the newspaper, the local newspaper, and spoke to anybody, was there to, you know, talk with anybody and explain what we were doing. During that time that we were open, and I'm sure the Sheriff's Department can confirm this, we never ever had any instance in which there was a disturbance or a complaint. We never had to call the Sheriff's Department. So I'd like all of you to take into consideration that, and I don't mean this as a pejorative, that ignorance about cannabis, marijuana is still very, very pervasive, and it fuels fear. And people come up with all kinds of things and that are not really realistic or relative. And I think that some time and effort should be made on the part of the county to educate the public. I haven't seen any effort whatsoever being made by authorities to educate, and it's woefully missing from this picture. So that's what I wanted to say, and thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you very much, and perhaps, as you suggest about education, it should come maybe from the people that are setting up the establishments, both medical and recreational. Because, I mean, if you want to educate the public, you know, we want to make sure that if you have any information, that it be put out to them, to the public, so the public understands exactly what it is. So, I mean, thank you for your comments. Supervisor Brecker, you had additional comments?
I do want to say that I'm happy to participate with the board. I'm available as a consultant, but we've been in this business now for 11 years, and I've been studying cannabis for over 25 years. So I'm available, and I'm happy to participate in any type of committee, et cetera, in order to help this process.
Absolutely, we'll keep you in mind, sir. Supervisor, Vice Chairman Brecker, you've been waiting patiently since I've skipped over you three or four times now. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify to everybody on the phone that this is an ordinance, and this needs to be passed as written. I greatly appreciate all the comments and all the input that we've had from the community on different aspects of the ordinance that they feel need to be adjusted. I think that this board, should we adopt this ordinance, which would be willing to move forward and ask staff to make those changes, but today, as is, is how this ordinance will need to be adopted.
Right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I see a chat box comment, thank you, Mr. McEwen, for that. So are there any other comments? See none at this time then. Frank, thank you very much, we'll go ahead and adjourn our public hearing. And Cheryl, entertain a motion to adjourn our public hearing and convene regular session. Do a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, Cheryl, entertain a motion to convene into the Flood Control District. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item five, discussion, possible action to adopt ordinance number 2021-2, amending the Santa Cruz County Flood Plane and Erosion Hazard Management Ordinance Number 2001-03. As you heard, Mr. Hayes mentioned the changes to it, and also the changes that would be on the internet, on our website, for a lot easier use of people by clicking on the chapter to go right to the page. So Cheryl, entertain a motion. So moved. Do a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, John, appreciate it. At this time, Cheryl, entertain a motion to adjourn our Flood Control District and convene into the regular meeting. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Our Flood Control District is adjourned, and we are now convened into our regular session. Action items, H, number 12. Discussion, possible action to adopt ordinance number 21, excuse me, 2021-03, revising Article 2 and Article 9 of the Santa Cruz County Zoning and Developmental Code and adding a new Article 30 to provide definitions and use standards in county zoning districts for adult use recreational marijuana establishments, nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries, dual licensee establishments, marijuana off-site cultivation facilities, and marijuana off-site manufacturing facilities. Go ahead Supervisor Miletta.
I move to approve the item, ordinance 2021-03, as presented by staff with direction that staff prepares a subsequent text amendment that reflects the distance standards recommended by the Planning Commission.
Do a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, now, under discussion, looked like you were puzzled there, Vice Chairman.
Yeah, I'm puzzled. So move to approve the ordinance, and then I think we need to direct staff to make those changes. In discussion.
Yeah, I think it was done in the one motion, that's a good motion, right, Kim? Yeah.
Good job Supervisor.
Yeah, so it's done. So in other words, we're going to approve it, and staff is now directed to look at the distance on that and make whatever text changes and recommend.
That were proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Exactly. Great. Any other questions or comments? What?
Did we vote?
Not yet. So it's still under discussion.
I would just ask that you clarify an effective date.
Okay, so.
I couldn't hear you, Kim.
No, she wants us to put an effective date, so is it 15 days from the time that it's done?
It's normally 30 days unless you designate it as.
As an emergency?
As for tomorrow. There are some issues with respect to applications and when they're due. And so they're due on March 9th, so we wouldn't be able to sign off on applications until you make this effective.
So then, so Mr. Miletta, you can, if you can restate your motion, making that effective. We can make it effective today, right, Kim? At the end, or the conclusion, once upon adoption?
You can make it effective immediately if you choose to.
Okay. So if you want to.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment and make it effective immediately.
So let's vote on the friendly amendment to make it immediately. All in favor, oh, I need a second on the friendly amendment.
I'll second the second amendment.
There's a friendly amendment, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, the friendly amendment carries, now let's vote on the main. Main motion, and that was to approve the ordinance as presented, and direct staff to change the length of the dispensaries as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there is a motion and a second? Yes, go ahead.
Question. Kim, is everything, are we doing everything in line? It's a little confusing up here for me.
So I think your question relates to the changes to the Planning and Zoning, that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, is that correct?
I want to make sure that the ordinance that we're adopting today is in effect immediately, and Mr. Dillon will be, the Community Development Director will be able to sign off on the applications that are due on the 9th.
The board has approved, as I understand what the board has just done, the board has approved the ordinance as is, effective immediately, and also has directed staff to make some text amendments and to forward those for your future approval. Is that correct?
Well, so what we did is, we, so what we did was, is we approved the friendly amendment to make the ordinance effective immediately. So now we come back to the main motion, which is the adoption of the ordinance. So we're going to vote on that, and that takes into account changing the length of the restrictions that have been objected to and have been recommended to be changed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that correct? Good, okay, does that?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for entertaining.
Not a problem. So there is a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously, and our ordinance is adopted with staff's direction, so. So at this time, I will go ahead and recess our meeting for about eight minutes. We have an 11:00 AM study session.
I had one more comment on the ordinance. I just want to clarify that these are state regulations, and for the people who live in Santa Cruz County, we do have a federal border patrol checkpoint that you need to take into consideration. And I think that's a very important thing to point out to our constituents.
Absolutely, good. Okay, so we'll recess till 11:00 AM. Okay, our recess is over, it's time to go back to class. So at this time, we will go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to recess our meeting and convene into study session. Do a second discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries, we are now convened into our study session, and it is an update on initial work for broadband initiatives for Santa Cruz County. Juan, thank you very much, and take it away, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'm just going to go over some of the work that we've been doing regarding broadband. First, I'd like to thank the School Superintendent's Office, Mr. Alfred Velazquez and Chris Young. They've been instrumental in helping me put some of this together. So I've shared with you the report that GSW helped us put together. It was an overview of the resources that we currently have in place.
Can you hear me?
And that we have identified as potential anchor institutions that could serve for further development of our broadband initiative.
Hold on a second, Juan. So I see GSW Telecom, and then James.
Hello, anyone else there?
Mr. Palmer, how are you? So we'll let Juan make his presentation, and then if we need to, we'll go ahead and ask you for your comments. So ki do ki. Please, Juan, continue.
Okay, thank you. So like I was mentioning, we've, the report in front of you kind of identified current resources and anchor institutions that we could use in the future. It's an initial look at the inventory and carriers and, but what's probably, and we'll let GSW kind of touch on this, you know, there's still a lot of need, right? We've identified some of the middle mile capacity that we have, but, you know, to get to where we would like, it's going to be some more in-depth, in detail look at, you know, how do we accomplish that? So, yeah, if either Mark or Les is on the line, they could give a quick summary of their findings.
So gentleman, Mark, and who's the other gentleman?
Les.
Les. You can unmute yourself.
There's Mark.
Okay, Mark, I see that you.
Hey, Mark, yeah, if you could give us a quick summary.
Yeah, so Mark, it looks like you're unmuted, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm going to actually, I'm going to actually let Les pick up the conversation and expand on it. I think he's unmuted. I'm showing myself unmuted on one icon, but muted on another, so a little bit.
Are you on a Zoom call? Are you on a Zoom call?
I am on Zoom call.
Yeah, it should be, you could, okay, I see Wes, Wes, you're unmuted now.
My audio reception is not very good. For a moment there, I thought you were asking for Les to join. But if I understand correctly, it is indeed me that you'd like to hear from? This is what I am.
There we go. Les.
So we do have a Les. If you don't need me right now, then I take it, so I will unmute.
I guess Les and Les is so close. So my bad, my bad, Wes and Les, so we're going to have Les top, or maybe more top, I don't know. Go ahead, Les. Les, are you there? There, I can see you there on the corner, so please, sir, begin.
So how would you like me to start? My audio wasn't working, so I missed the introduction there.
Okay.
Yeah, you could just give us a quick summary of your findings.
Okay, great, sure. So we spent the last, can everyone hear me just fine? I just want to make sure we got a good connection.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. So over the last several months, we've done some research, and it was broken up into Phase 1 and Phase 2. I'm going to assume everyone has a copy of the presentation for the network right now in front of them, is that correct?
Yes, yes, we have a copy of the, yes, we got it.
Okay, great. Okay, excellent. So during that process, we researched several areas that's outlined in the executive summary. But our main intention was to, I think someone has some, is not muted in the background because I'm getting a lot of static. I can't tell who it is. There we go, sounds better now. Anyway, our objective was to develop a vision, and this is following similar visions that we've done for other counties across the country, particularly in Arizona. And the need for high-speed internet in Santa Cruz County to provide internet to communities in Santa Cruz County is critical for all schools, students, government, business, and residents. Without a doubt, there's a number of counties and communities struggling across Arizona, particularly more rural communities, with internet connectivity. particularly more rural communities, with internet connectivity. We were tasked to take a look at where you have internet and where the gaps exist, and so this document outlines what carriers, which we put in a story together for you, that you currently have present, that provide fiber optic and wireless services, and in the index page, you can of course look to that if you'd like to see the carrier inventory. And then simultaneously, once we, once we got a good inventory of various carriers that you have coming through there, throughout your county, we looked also where they are not present, so where network is really not available. And so if you look at the map on page two, that just kind of gives you a high visual of your county, and we started looking at each of the key communities outlined on that, on that map, that conceptual roadmap. We found that a number of your communities are, I'm sure, no surprise to you, but underserved, meaning they don't have community-wide broadband access or acceptable levels of. In fact, some of your residents and businesses don't even have internet connectivity, period. They may get access to a, a number of unique ways to get, get it, meaning satellite, which is quite poor, but at the end of the day, it's not acceptable for students and businesses and government to operate. So our first objective was to put a vision together, analyze the carriers that you had, and then in turn, determine where you had gaps, connectivity, and/or services. In the process of that, we also came up with a high-level recommended solution that could enable connectivity to underserved or these communities to expand the existing services there. And, and what a high level, make the point that on page two, this is a conceptual idea, it's not a confirmed approach. I'm gonna try something here. So it's not a confirmed approach, but it is a conceptualization. We're getting a lot of static, I'm gonna try something different. Can you hear me? Nope.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can hear you, go, go ahead, Les, we can hear you.
Okay, so you can hear me on the microphone?
Absolutely.
Much better.
Okay. So this is a conceptual network map, and if you follow the route, lines from Nagales up to Amado, and from Nagales up to Sonora, or Sonoyta, correction, and then over to Elgin, that's just a conceptual fiber optic network that would originate in Nagales and run up to Amado, just a fork, if you will, and then run up, run up to Sonoyta and Elgin. The intention behind that conceptual middle mile, however that is accomplished, that could be collaborated by encouraging existing carriers to build some network where it doesn't exist along these routes. It could be a combination between the county and communities to apply for funds and grants, which we outlined some options there, to build that network, and then maybe co-manage it, or assist carriers by applying for grants with those carriers to build that out and operate it. And so, there's a number of ways to accomplish getting more fiber connections into your communities. From there, it could be distributed via wireless, your local ISPs could connect to that and distribute, new 5G carriers that are distributing private and national could connect to that fiber network and get the internet connectivity they need. The county could get access to that, schools could get access to that, and then simultaneously, there are a number of new wireless 5G private companies that we could suggest how they could build some wireless towers in these communities and cover a five or 10-mile radius and provide broadband services. So there's a number of solutions, once you get a core backbone, through these communities, that would engage and enable a lot of other vendors to connect onto that. One of the reasons that vendors aren't expanding into these communities is they can't get a return on their investment. And when they can't get a return on their investment, they're not motivated to lose money, because they're for profit. And unlike government, you can acquire grants and build things, or networks, or streets, or roads, without making a profit, because you're providing a service. But to date, all the internet services that are being provided to communities across the country are generally either privately built and funded, or you collaborate with companies that are for profit. So this kind of addresses that, that potential to build some fiber network in collaboration, or a private network, and get funding, so that you can get plenty of people to jump on that, or meaning vendors, to provide services. So that's the high-level objective of this report. We drill down into a lot of detail, demographics, et cetera. So I'd kind of like to just stop there, and, and just let you all think for a minute about the conceptual idea of having fiber between all these communities that enables connectivity from various sources. And then I think the last statement I'd like to leave you with is that, having built thousands and thousands of miles of fiber, and my experience in managing telecom companies, large ones and small and medium-sized ones, a couple of projects near to home that just kind of illustrate, not only my experience, but my understanding of your requirements and your challenges. About five years ago, I worked on a project where we built a 90-mile fiber, high-capacity fiber network from Tucson down through Nagales, crossed the border, and went over to Metro Reds, which is a international border crossing, so that international traffic from Mexico could cross-connect to that fiber network, come back up through Tucson, and in turn, connect to many carriers up here in Tucson at a carrier hotel. So that cross-connects to many carriers, traverse traffic all across the U.S. We also built, up at where Canog is, the radio station, there's a private, a small colos facility there, where that fiber goes through, that Century Link has some capacity in there, and Valley Telecom has some capacity where that 244 count, high-capacity fiber network goes through. From there, we were able to hand off around the community, that interconnected at one point, to a company that built fiber to the school district there, Conterra, and they had built and interconnected to that fiber, so they could get internet bandwidth to the schools. It's my understanding that Conterra did not win the renewal on that, and a second company is, has built out another fiber network to the school district, so that fiber capacity from Conterra is sitting there dormant, which we outlined in our inventory, and that'll have a potential for enabling some fiber connectivity in your communities. But the real high-level point here is that I did that project, which brought a lot of facilities and capabilities to Nagales, but it never got distributed beyond the schools. It does interconnect to the Border Patrol, it does interconnect to a couple of other carriers, but at the end of the day, that was one project that does bring some capacity to Nagales that could help you in your future expansion. In Tucson, I worked for US West for a few years, Quest, managed those networks and the teams up here. I spent 10 years with Time Warner Telecom here in Tucson. We built a 700-mile fiber network that we started from zero and interconnected to about 2,000 businesses, providing high-speed internet and voice services. And I'll leave you kind of with this thought, it took us 10 years to build that network, probably in excess of $100 million of capital, staggered over 10 years, and turned out to be quite a profitable entity. We got bought by Level Three, and subsequently by Century Link, and that company has been spun off again. But the point of it is, is that, that particular network is one of a number that I worked on, where we started from scratch. So I'll leave you with this thought on your conceptual middle mile network. It's a evolution, not a revolution, to build one of these type of networks. Much like at Time Warner Telecom, we would build anywhere from 50 to 100 miles per year, but we kept after it, much like you would build roads, you know, you have that planning process, or you build a business, you have your planning process. So this conceptual middle mile network, it's doubtful that you would acquire funding to build it all in one year, and to have it up and running, but through collaboration and some focus, and through a process and planning, you could acquire and apply for grants, and participate with the various carriers, and build X number of miles every year, so somewhere four or five years down the road, you've got that completely done, and, and you've got control of your destiny and your communities. But I've yet to see a community get, you know, a full grant to build out one of these middle miles initially, but simultaneously, we could look at, as you apply for grants and develop that process, we could look at those markets that are experiencing the poorest connectivity, and the best, and needs, and the need for most demand, and focus on those first. So Nagales has some pretty good coverage, but you have Amado, you have Elgin, you have Sonoyta, that, there's a number of your communities that are terribly underserved. So some of those might get prioritized in collaboration with a team that's on board here. Having worked finally across the state of Arizona, and having originally come from Nebraska, where we have 99 rural telecoms that serve those communities, and one of the most connected states in the country over the last 10 years, they have fiber to every single community across the state, it was a process. When I came to Arizona 25 years, I was quite concerned, and I am equally concerned today, as how poor internet connectivity is. So when I left corporate and started GSW eight years ago, I spent about 20% of my time doing consulting and trying to find ways to solve problems for rural communities, and we've had some successes, like the 90-mile fiber route that was built, and some others throughout Verde Valley, but none of them have a ubiquitous or total coverage. So that's kind of the high level, hopefully, that, that kind of brings some focus to it, makes sense to all of you.
It, it, it does, Les, and, you know, I think a lot of, of what affects us down here is the terrain, because of, of trying to get those fiber lines out. I know we had an issue out in Sonoyta with Quest one time, I know the schools have tried to work together, and they formed a consortium, and I think that might have fallen apart, but the, the Nagales Unified School District, which had a better E-rate, which would have helped the schools, because unfortunately, is, and I know our, our tech guy from the school districts, Alex Lopez is on there, the director says, you know, that E-rate can't pay for anything for private. The one thing I, I do remember is that there were no real companies wanting to come up to that and, and, and take the, the bull by the horns to sort of say, to offer that internet, and, and of course, I guess the devil's in the detail, I like what you say, it's an evolution and not a revolution, and we've been trying to do everything that we can to make sure that we find ways to make sure that those that, that need the connectivity, we can find a way to do it, and again, the devil, the devil's in the details, so, you know, there's, there's a few challenges for us. And then, short of, I don't know what the county can, can do to spend taxpayer dollars to create some type of, of infrastructure, if it's allowed or not allowed, and then what is the, what is the payback for the citizens for putting in that type of revenue to, to get those, that infrastructure in place, so.
Supervisor Brackery had some comments?
I do have some comments.
Go ahead.
I have to turn my thing on.
Yeah, turn your mic on.
I do have some comments, thank you very much, Chairman Reese. We have, this study is a, is a starting point for us. I think today, what I would like to identify is, what are the short, some of the short-term gains, gains that we can make? What are some of the long-term strategies we need to take? I'd like to thank the county's school superintendent and his office for bringing a lot of resources to the table today. We have Mylan Eaton from the state, and we have different representatives from the different school districts. For many years, broadband has been treated like a luxury, it is no longer a luxury in this, in this day and age, it is a necessity, it's like water, it's like, like electricity, and we really, I, I, it's my belief that there really needs to be a shift in the conversation at all county levels, small counties in particular, because the small rural counties are the ones that have been left behind in this game, and we're losing out economically, and our kids are losing out on, on ways to learn and grow. And I think that there are, that there, if, it's a long-term game, but there are some short-term strategies that we can use to, you know, to get internet out there. Some of it's going to be for school kids only, some of it's going to be able to be blended, some of these grants for school and for regular use. So I really look forward to hearing from some of the people that we have on the phone today, and thank you very much to all of you who have attended.
Supervisor Miletta.
This is Les again, I'd like to kind of leverage what Mr. Bracker just brought up. You know, I think, I'd like to give kudos to, to the county for taking the, you know, the, the time and the effort, they spent quite a bit of time with us upfront, looking at some of the other presentations we did, and they've been invested in trying to solve this problem for quite a while. Like I said, I've been working down in Nagales for probably 15, 20 years now, on small, medium-sized projects. I've always found the county very receptive, but at the end of the day, getting access to the funds and funding is always the challenge. There's a, there's a lot of ways to get access to funding. What I find reoccurring theme, and this should be no, no secret to anyone on this call, but then again, it should be a tip, an extremely important tip. Pima County, Maricopa County, your, your largest counties are very successful at acquiring grant money and collaborating with the carriers, and attracting broadband expansion, and they tend to get, in my opinion, an inordinate amount of resources, you know, relative to the rural communities. But once again, it's based on profit, and it's based on the way the process is structured. So with that being said, I put, together with Mark, a document that kind of talks about next steps, and, you know, I understand that the counties, local communities, the state, they all have competing priorities at times, but with the pandemic, it has made very clear that broadband connectivity is an absolute requirement. And so the allocation of, that comes to the state, that goes to the big carriers, through legislative process, through the public utilities process, and, and through your representatives, needs a new focus, from where I sit. I, I just tested this the other day, I called the PUC to check on a particular customer's having internet issues, and when I called the PUC, they said, we no longer handle those calls, because that's an unregulated business, and we only handle regulated business, which just for the record is your standard phone line service. I do know that eight, 10 years ago, when I was at Time Warner's VP, I would get calls periodically from the PUC to collaborate with us to help sell customers. calls periodically from the PUC, uh, to collaborate with us to help sell customers' complaints. We took them very seriously at TW. We didn't get that many, but when we got them, we worked with the PUC and we resolved it. So I think, um, either I got somebody who didn't understand the process, but I was pretty diligent. That's just one example of, you know, I think a few things need to be restructured to help the rural communities, um, get on the, uh, on the list. But I'll get off my bandwagon and just let you know that I think that, um, you've had some, some progress, but if you look at our next steps document that we put together, it's a template. Uh, some of this may work, uh, for you. Some of it may not, but it is a guideline to say, here's kind of a direction. Um, if you wanted to get from, uh, you know, Nogales to San Diego, um, here's a map. Now you might decide to not stop at all these locations and eat and visit and stay and enjoy the communities along the route. You may, um, pick a, you know, certain spots that you want to visit. And that's the same way this, uh, next step document works. It gives you a route. It gives you the possibilities, um, and it gives you a number of options, uh, to exercise, to start getting, um, some relationships with Valley Telecom, with CenturyLink, um, with different vendors that already have services down there and work with them jointly, uh, to apply for grants, help them get grants, work with the state of Arizona, um, and to get on their radar, um, as they get funding. Um, one of the challenges of a lot of this funding that does show up, they're earmarked for certain types of use. And, uh, he gave a real good example on E-rate. Um, however, there are some opportunities with E-rate, uh, to leverage it. Um, but it's, uh, it's a kind of a deep study on how to use E-rate. Uh, but I'll give you a quick example. Uh, one of the communities that we work with, there were some new rules about five years ago that stopped, uh, E-rate stopped funding wireless, uh, broadband services. Uh, Nogales Unified School District used to have wireless monopoles at all your schools with very slow internet speeds. Um, it's unfortunate that those were all removed. I, I think they were all removed because they could, could be used for 5G now, but the point being is, is that, uh, fiber was funded through E-rate, um, as a qualified, um, only solution, um, and wireless services that meet the minimum requirements. So, um, now, three years ago, they passed some new rules through the FCC, um, that lets broadband services under E-rate that are built to schools could potentially be overbuilt, meaning excess capacity. Um, you can't fund it with the E-rate, but I'll give you an example. Let's say you've got a hundred and forty-four fibers and the school district needs half of those. Let's just say they need seventy of those fibers. Um, E-rate will only fund those seventy fibers and that's plenty of capacity. The other seventy though, um, could be funded by other sources, uh, grants. And when you're building that, it would be, it's like an open utility trench. When you're building a road, uh, you open a utility trench and multiple utilities go in and it saves money, uh, for each of the individual utilities versus if they had to dig that trench, fill it up, backfill it, et cetera. So the same applies with fiber and, um, E-rate. Uh, you can build that primary internet service, but that excess capacity could be funded through matching funds from the state, could be funded through telemedicine funds, but, but it could take, um, uh, a different approach than just ordering up E-rate and just having an E-rate service delivered to the school. So that's one example. We're seeing a lot of school districts collaborating with counties and communities and the carriers that are building that out, uh, to build extra capacity and get funding so that they can solve some of these problems to build that extra capacity along with the E-rate, basically reducing the cost.
Hey Les, this is Mylan.
And so that's just one of many examples.
We do that all over the state today. We've got about a hundred and thirty-five million dollars of the bills and several thousand miles of fiber going in the ground right now. And that's exactly what we do all over the state.
Precisely.
And right now, we also have Patagonia and Sonoyta, uh, have submitted RFPs and they've asked for state match funding so we can build fiber to those two school districts for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. So as soon as that's funded, we'll be building those fiber, fiber to those locations also.
Can they be over, oversubscribed? Can there be excess capacity so that other wireless carriers or ISPs can connect onto that?
That's up to the carrier. When the carrier builds it, we encourage them to build in their excess capacity, but that's up to them at their expense. So.
Yeah, so the, so the solution I'm talking, yeah, the solution I'm talking about is different than that, um, because.
No, we're talking the same one because we can't intentionally overbuild it, but they can at their expense build it over. So the, the sole intention of the E-rate program is for schools and libraries and that's written very strongly in the rules.
But I'll give you a, a real example. Conterra built the fiber network to that school district down there, um, and they put excess.
Yeah, but listen, we need to be very, very clear with U8 schools.
I am. I'm being.
I know. And they're, they're written very strongly that the purpose of the U8 program is for schools and libraries, not for overbuilding. So let's make sure we're very, very clear there.
Okay, okay, guys, guys, time out, time out. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to make.
Hold, hold on a second, guys. It's still our meeting. It's still our study session. You guys are talking over each other and all blah, 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 blah. So Mylan, if you want to go ahead and talk first and then we'll let Les respond afterwards. So go ahead because we're not getting anything other than this or that or blah, 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 blah. So please, Mylan, go ahead. And then once he's done, Les, we'll go ahead and acknowledge you. How's that?
Fair enough.
Great. Go ahead, sir.
That's, that's fine. I just want to make sure that we're not advertising to overbuild using E-rate dollars. That goes against the rules and that will get us, our state funding for E-rate wiped away. And it's, uh, it's too critical for that. That's all I wanted to point out.
What's that? Yeah, so my, my suggestion was not that. My suggestion is, is that E-rate funds the school fibers and then the vendor, um, acknowledges and overbuilds with the potential, um, at, on their nickel or separate funding, not E-rate funding, to be very clear, like Mylan said, get separate funding from the state, separate funding from different buckets of funds that are not attached to E-rate to build that extra capacity while you're building the E-rate, uh, and funding that portion. So a, a simple way, a simple analogy would be the state would fund a two-lane highway, but, um, want a third lane and the county might decide they want to fund that third lane and they go get a special grant for that third lane. That's what I'm suggesting. Not commingling, not using E-rate funds for overbuilding. But we see this happening over and over again across the state or across the country where there's some collaboration, um, to Mylan's point, with the carrier. However, we'll tell you that the large carriers, and I've worked for them, are not incented the same as rural telecom carriers like, uh, specifically Valley Telecom or Conterra and those sort of companies. Uh, they are motivated to overbuild those networks with separate funds so that they can generate separate revenue streams and serve new customers. Uh, CenturyLink is very regulated slash Lumen. They're highly regulated and they are, quite frankly, um, kept in a lane, rightfully so, and it makes it very difficult for them to overbuild.
Well, Mylan.
Did I kind of, did I kind of cover that, Mylan?
This is Supervisor Brackery.
Hold on, Bruce. So, so Mylan, are you going to respond to Les?
Oh, no. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, so Supervisor Brackery has a question for you, Mylan. Go ahead, Supervisor.
Mylan, first of all, thank you very much for taking the time this morning to, uh, to dial into this meeting. My question is, um, based on this report, where do you see that we have advantages or possibilities for some short-term gains to get some internet out to some underserved houses, whether it be in the east county, whether it be on the west side of the mountain, you know, Sonoyta, Elgin, Patagonia, Tubac, Rio Rico, Nogales? Where, what do you, what do you, what's your vision? What do you see?
I haven't seen the report yet, but I'm pretty familiar with the area and your situation, uh, superintendent. So, um, one of the things that we press really hard for over the past two years is we, um, Chris and Alfredo worked really hard with the consortium together to get a contract with CenturyLink, which in turn, you know, they, they stopped halfway through the project. So then we started over and then we went up, went to the school districts out on the, uh, the Patagonia-Sonoyta area and I worked with them individually, um, with Chris's help. And we actually got them to do RFPs. So we're going to be building fiber out there to actually bring services in there. Um, Valley Telecom is definitely one of them. I can't tell you who the other one is yet because it hasn't been announced. Valley Telecom has been announced for Patagonia. So, once we have a service provider in there, we'll be able to, and I'm sure that Les's report probably has a list of those private slash public 5G providers interested in burning it every.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, well, you kind of just blanked. We can't hear you anymore. I don't, I don't know if you're buffering or what's going on.
Are you?
Mylan?
Are you there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Oh, okay.
You dropped out.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, um, we'll take the list that Wes has, uh, that Les has put together for that area for the 5G type providers. We'll put out RFP. We'll actually get those guys to give us bids on building out 5G to the home for the residents out there in the next twelve months. So it's not a, a quick fix, but with all the, when I deal with federal funding, you know, my quick fix is, you know, twelve to thirty-six months.
This is Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead. And then Supervisor Miletta has some comments.
Something, something that gets built out for me in, in twelve months is, is a quick fix because we've been at this for years, trying to get broadband to these places. So twelve months is, is, is an acceptable timeframe for me.
Great.
Yes, sir. I've been working with, uh, the county school superintendent's office now for two or three years now, and we're making slow progress. It's not as fast as I would like, but we are making some progress.
Supervisor Miletta. Mr. Chair, um, first and foremost, I want to thank, uh, GSW for providing this report. I, I want to thank, um, Mylan for taking part as well and bringing his expertise. I want to thank the superintendent's office, Chris, uh, Mr. Velazquez, Juan, Jennifer, our whole team, because this broadband, uh, accessibility is real critical for our community and there are a lot of gaps. Um, I saw a question there by Mylan. Uh, I don't think it was answered yet. Uh, and basically if we already have that line that Les spoke of, that he took part in, do we have to spend that money there on that line coming from Tucson to, uh, Nogales? Uh, Les, could you answer that?
Um, I, you know, I really, I mean, I'm aware of the project from the state level, but, um, and I've, and I've read quite a bit about it. I think Mylan might be better, um, or someone from the state that's put that project together, uh, because I think that has, uh, some primary uses, uh, meaning some objectives, um, that may or may not align with, you know, what you need. Um, I'll give an example. I know for many years, um, there's been an attempt for a statewide, um, govnet or government network. We've seen two or three vendors attempt to build that out. Um, unfortunately, they failed, um, to get a unified strategy across the whole state. Um, and so this may be, I'm not sure, but this may be, um, the state of Arizona's, um, taking control and wants to build a network so that it gets accomplished this time. I, I don't know the answer. I might be out of my plane here.
Okay.
Yeah, Les, I was hoping you had some good info on that. There, um, the governor took, um, has taken forty million dollars of his funds and using it to, he's building conduits for fiber of I-17 to, uh, from Flagstaff to Phoenix and then Tucson to Nogales, um, nineteen, because of the lack of connectivity there. And I was surprised to hear that that ninety-mile stretch actually had fiber in it already. So if it does, I was, I was kind of hoping you had more info than, than I did, but between the two of us, maybe we'll put our heads together one day and look at some maps and figure it out.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. Um, Valley Telecom, um, had, had control, lost control, and I believe, um, the most recent, they have control of that ninety-mile fiber. Um, and that ninety-mile fiber was, uh, I believe a two-hundred-and-forty-four count. It follows the rail line, um, up here in Tucson. It connects from Euclid and there's a private, uh, colo there. So yes, there is.
Okay.
There is excess capacity on that, that, uh, um, we are unauthorized.
Well, I should know. Valley Telecom has it.
Yeah. Valley Telecom has managed to, and, uh, dark night float top of that. So that would be who to talk to, work together on it.
Great.
I know them well. I'll talk to them. Thank you, sir.
You know, Steve, I'm sure, the CEO.
Yes, sir.
It'd be very, uh, very easy to interconnect at Tucson to that. Um, and there's potential breakout points, um, along that route. So that maybe could be a great opportunity instead of investing the, the state funds on that ninety-mile stretch. For the long haul, maybe they could provide last mile dollars to Nogales to, uh, and Valley to come off of that middle mile network and connect it to those communities underserved, using those dollars to reallocate them instead of for a middle mile network, use them for the last mile, get into those communities.
That's a great point.
That would be my recommendation. Be a great win for Santa Cruz County.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your participation. Thank you for, um, your answer. And I, I, I guess it's, uh, it's more research for you guys and, uh, this is to be continued.
Yeah, so, so just, 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 just quickly before, uh, Mr. Young comes up to the podium and, and addresses that, uh, look, at the end of the day, it's very evident to me that we have to find a way to create a, a better partnership. In other words, if the school districts are going to be dropping in X amount of fiber lines heading to the east county through the E-rate, that at the same time that that's bid out is that we get a partner that, uh, will be the, the hub to, uh, participate in, in laying their line alongside of what the, so in other words, have one cost associated with digging a trench and putting the infrastructure in the ground so that the school districts don't bear the whole, uh, brunt of it and violate any kind of law, but also giving the private sector an opportunity to be able to put their product, uh, alongside what the school district is. I know this is a good roadmap. I think it gives us opportunities and it's certainly, in my estimation, something that we will not solve here today at this study session, but we need to continue to move forward, find other options and, and find ways of making sure that Santa Cruz County is not part of the digital divide. So in other words, that we can find that kind of connectivity for the benefit of, of every resident, uh, in the east county as well as on the west side of the county, that is a benefit to our students, that it's a benefit to commerce, uh, that it's a benefit to the residents that just want to, you know, be on and chatting, whether it's Facebook or whatever that it is that they, uh, like to do with their families to, to connect. So it's, it's, it's an opportunity, uh, for us to, to move forward and, and, and find, uh, those partnerships, uh, that are going to benefit anyone. Chris, uh, if you have something to add, I think, uh, Juan's got the.
Yeah, I think we were gonna, um, have Wes, uh, kind of talk to us a little bit about his project.
Okay, so, uh, I guess I've been overruled. So Wes, talk about your project.
And then after that, I think I see Maria there, uh, with her hand raised. She's, uh, from Siegel. I think I, uh, I spoke with her yesterday, so, um, we could let her chime in a little bit.
And then Maria. So Wes, go, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us. Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, Well, first of all, thank you for having us. Uh, I'll be brief. Uh, my name is Wes Brownfield. I'm the executive director of the Arizona Rural Schools Association. About a year ago, we became concerned, uh, associated with the pandemic that virtual learning and, uh, issues of internet equity for our rural students not get overlooked in the rush for building large projects in response to, uh, the digital divide. What we were hoping to do is focus, uh, attention, uh, particularly among policymakers and legislators on that last mile connection. Thanks to the efforts of Mylan Eaton, uh, and E-rate, a good many of our schools across the state now have what amounts to a broadband superhighway right up to the schools. But that highway often falls apart, particularly in rural Arizona, where, uh, either internet does not exist, is of very low quality, or is too expensive for many of our rural families to afford. So our, our number one goal is to bring attention to all the last mile projects around the state. And everywhere there's a community with a good anchor institution with good broadband, therein lies, uh, a final mile or a last mile, uh, uh, opportunity to get quality internet to the student. And the first step in, uh, dealing with this issue, issue is to create awareness. So that was our first goal, is to create awareness, particularly for policymakers, that yes, you have, uh, middle mile and you have anchor institutions, but what we really need to do, particularly in a digital learning environment, is, uh, do our best to make sure as many of our students have quality internet as possible. Uh, and one thing that Les did say, uh, that I think is absolutely true, is that this is going to need collaboration, uh, a lot of planning, and it's going to take time. This is one of those things that is not going to happen overnight, and the final mile project is definitely in this, uh, for the long run. Uh, just a moment here. I'm sharing my screen. Anyway, uh, where we are right now is we are working with various districts to identify, uh, projects to build out from their anchor institution. Wi-Fi cap, uh, capacity for, uh, to create, uh, complete that connection to the kids. This is our basic theory. Uh, well, a couple of them. First of all, return on investment is absolutely necessary. We have no interest at, uh, in the final mile of being an ISP. That is not what we're all about. What we're trying to do is create opportunity to do the capital build out of that, from that, uh, anchor institution so that we can, uh, internet service providers will not have to expend that capital money. Therefore, they can offer internet services at a reduced price that's affordable for the kid. We have, uh, six projects up and, uh, ready to go and we believe we have funding, uh, from the Arizona Department of Ed for those, but that's just a, a beginning. Uh, Mylan has, if you look on, uh, our website, if you go to, uh, under the project, you'll see right there that map, if you can all see it.
That's a.
That's Mylan Eaton's creation of what it could look like from Nogales up to Elgin and up to Amado. Most of that infrastructure, as far as towers, uh, and, uh, terrain that's high enough, already exists. So that's the, uh, that in a nutshell is what we're looking at trying to recreate around the state, is take that wonderful broadband superhighway that so many schools enjoy and make it available to the student. We are willing to take, uh, accept marginal successes, at one kid at a time, so that we have some, uh, one district, uh, that's a project partner that, uh, has six, six families or six homes, uh, of the students. So if you've got six students only, considering there are probably multiple, uh, students in each of those families, we can light up 10 kids. We'll be happy with that on the way to lighting up more kids. So we are, uh, we're willing to do this at the granular, granular level. We are willing to, uh, embrace marginal improvements because we know over time, and time is one thing we do have an abundance of, is those marginal improvements will aggregate to meaningful change. So, uh, I won't keep you much longer. I, uh, I, I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer either, uh, either in this, uh, uh, setting or by email. We think this has a tremendous capacity to really make a difference for our rural students. And I don't recall who said it now, but I absolutely believe it's true. Uh, if you, I think counties, the boards of supervisors and the county school, uh, superintendent and those, uh, districts are, uh, if they can work together and leverage their, uh, their capacity, therein lies a whole lot of success. So essentially, when you dig one hole in the ground, uh, you only have to dig one with multiple players putting stuff in that hole in the ground rather than everybody digging their own hole.
Absolutely. Thank you, Wes.
I'll stop my share. If anybody needs any more from me, I will drop, uh, my contact information in chat. And, uh, and again, I cannot thank you enough for including us. This is just what I have come to learn to expect from the Santa Cruz County, uh, Office of County School Superintendent and, uh, now the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Wes. Appreciate it. Maria, if you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Hi, um, so my name is Maria Porter. I work for Seago, Southeastern Arizona Government Organization. And I just wanted to mention that we are working on, um, applying for an EDA grant for technical assistance to develop a regional plan to bring broadband to the region. And our region is Santa Cruz County, Cochise County, Graham and Greenlee County. And we are so excited to learn and be part of this discussion. You know, thank you so much, Juan, for sending me the information. Um, and I just wanted to offer our assistance and continue the dialogue, um, between Santa Cruz County and Seago so that we can learn how we can complement and assist your project moving forward. Let that be helping with writing grants, seeking funding, um, learning best practices as well as you guys forge ahead on your project. And, um, you know, the communities may be in different areas, but we are looking for funding specifically to cater to where projects are. So I appreciate the dialogue and being at the table to learn where you are and how we can assist and how we can incorporate your needs into the grants that we, we write to bring more resources. So, thank you for inviting me to be part of the discussion and it's been such a enlightening and valuable opportunity for me. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
And thank you, Maria. We appreciate it. Uh, you know, uh, it's part of the partnership and, uh, it's great that you're applying for technical funding, but I mean, somewhere along the line besides technical, we're going to need some type of engineering or some type of other, uh, help to be able to identify and, and probably have more realistic cost estimates as to what the projects would cost and how we bring people together to, uh, be able to find a way to cut costs for, for everyone involved. So, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Maria.
When, thank you. When we spoke to our EDA rep, um, because we're an economic development district, she did share that at the end of this project, ensuring that all of the questions that we have to have shovel-ready projects is what they would expect. So if there are certain gaps that you need and questions that you have to be able to get a shovel-ready project, please, let's have that discussion so we can ensure that we include it in our scope of work to EDA. Um, and, you know, that may be further dive and consultant assistance of identifying that last mile and helping that discussion between different carriers or identifying different budgets. Ultimately, all those boxes that you need chat to have a shovel-ready project so that we can assist you as well moving forward in applying for construction grants. Because ultimately, right, that's the end goal, is not just have this study and have these documents, but see the project through and these individuals be able to access reliable broadband.
Absolutely, and, and we'll make sure that we include those. Like I said, I, you know, I'm very grateful that, uh, our IT Director, Juan here, has, uh, you know, reached out to some people. We have a, a roadmap. It gives us ideas. I'm glad that the Rural Schools Organization has, has another, uh, plan there and, and there's an opportunity to, to look, combine where we can and then, and then go out to, to you and, and the Seago Organization to see if anything of those would qualify for a shovel-ready program or what else we would need to do to qualify it as a shovel-ready. So.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Maria.
Go ahead.
Maria, it's Supervisor Bracker. Do you, is this part of the SEDS program? Is that what this is? Or am I off on that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? Um, it was, it was a little quiet.
Sure. The SEDS? Is that what, is this, is that the group of grants that we need to be included in?
Yes. So as you're looking at, um, your projects, that is one piece of it. But ultimately, you know, the need for broadband came out of the SEDS process. And so when we're talking about the SEDS, we're talking about the comprehensive economic development strategy. And that's a regional strategy that ultimately, um, identifies priorities and projects within our region to help our economic foundation be more sustainable, resilient, and create a diversified economy. And broadband came up in basically every discussion we had throughout the region and with other COGS as well. And that's what stemmed from this initiative and why we have started moving forward of trying to bring stakeholders and partners to the table to find out what is needed to see this accomplished in our region. And it may look different, um, in our region and based on what counties are trying to accomplish and who, what partners are at the table. But ultimately, we want to be able to assist wherever they're at in applying for funding and identifying different resources and connecting and collaborating with different stakeholders so we can learn from each other and grow as a state, um, to complement projects to bring broadband to those that need it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That answers my question.
And Maria, you're right. I mean, this is not a one-size-fits-all. I mean, there are different challenges, uh, throughout the state when it comes to this. So with that, Chris, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I, on behalf of County School Superintendent, Mr. Velazquez, I just wanted to reiterate that our main focus for this project, why we've been fighting for the past three years for this, is to get internet to kids. We don't want, we want to make sure every kid has the opportunity to be successful. And then on a greater scale, we want to help the economy of our, of our county. Those, those are the objectives. And also I want to thank, I see three school districts out there. Alex Leonard from Sonoyta, and then I believe I saw Ririco, I see, I think I saw you, Mr. St. Clair. Thank you for attending. We've always enjoyed the support of our school districts. And also I want to thank Mr. Mylan Eaton. He's been there since day one. He always answers the phone, even when some of those phone calls have been very difficult. Um, and also Wes for coming on board with us too. We truly appreciate it. And I want to let you know, one thing that makes our county very attractive, and we've been told this many times, is the relationship that we have with the school districts and with the Board of Supervisors. Everybody's on the same page. And so Wes, this is my sale pitch to you. You know, when you start looking for more projects, uh, I want to let you know, as you know, the County School Superintendent's Office with Mr. Velazquez, and now you can see the Board of Supervisors, we're all aligned and we're all dedicated to get internet to our kids. So, uh, next time you're coming up and looking for another project, here we are. We're set up. Uh, and so thank you so much for your time. Thank you to you, everybody here, Jennifer also, for working with us and accepting some of our, some of the hiccups that we've had with the consortium. But thank you so much. And I just want to reiterate that, that, uh, we are on board to do whatever we need to do in order to get internet to our kids.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that's a question of our commitment. I think that from, from day one, we realize the importance of having our schoolchildren be able to connect, uh, not just locally but globally. And, uh, it gives them, uh, very different opportunities. And you see news reports of, of students throughout the country connecting with students from other countries and exchanging ideas and working on projects together. And that is the same thing that we want for, for our students. We want them to have that opportunity. We also want, uh, you know, e-commerce. I mean, there's a lot of products now that sell on Amazon and eBay and some other websites. And why not have that opportunity for wine industry in Sonoyta or Toubac and the arts that they have there? So there are various opportunities, uh, to, to be able to take advantage of a good, sustainable broadband system that doesn't fail but continues to work. So, uh, you know, it's, it, I want to thank everyone involved with this. Um, I know that this won't be our last meeting, but I hope that, that next time, uh, we get together that we find, uh, you know, some way to let staff move forward with some of what's been presented. And, and at the end of the day is, we want our county to be the big winner in this. And if our county wins, that means the residents and the students and everybody wins. So Juan, I want to thank you for putting this together. Uh, Wes, Les, Mylan, Maria, uh, those that participated, thank you so much. We appreciate your input. Uh, we have some good resources here and I'm sure that somewhere along the line, we'll be able to get together again and, and continue this dialogue and perhaps by then identify some projects and, and, and some, uh, members that want to partner to make this happen. So with that, any concluding?
Actually, I have one question that I'd like to ask, um, Les, Wes, and Mylan, is, if you could give this to us in an abbreviated format, what do you guys believe our next steps are to, either a short-term to a short-term expansion of our broadband? What does this board need to be focused on? What does the school districts need to be focused on so that we can collaborate and, and, and move forward towards some broadband connectivity for people that are in need? And I guess let's start with.
Well, Les, you want to be first? If you're still there?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Did you say Les or Wes?
Well, I said Les, but if Wes is on the line, that's fine.
Les is speaking.
This is Wes.
Go ahead, Les. There you are.
Hi. Um, what an impressive group, um, and resources and knowledge that you've got, uh, pulled together here. Um, I think maybe, um, I, I would go back to the document that, uh, we sort of summarized for Phase One and Phase Two of recommendations and next steps. So I won't, uh, go through all of them, but I see it broken into two categories, strategic and tactical. And so tactical is going to be some quick hits, um, like Mylan and Wes brought up. And that's the last mile. And that's the bridging existing infrastructure. And, uh, the same with, um, Maria brought up, uh, that there's access to, um, Seago and other types of funding. Um, usually last mile funds would be what I would be focusing on. Um, and I think it's going to be a hybrid. So I'd be focusing on 5G, um, and I'd be focusing on Wi-Fi and that last mile, getting it into communities. That would be the tactical I would look at and think for those. That would be the tactical I would look at and think, uh, for those, um, build a lot of network. My thought on this is that, uh, you know, that last mile in the scope of things is the least expensive, um, and brings the greatest rewards. Uh, but the middle mile and the capacity to get to that last mile is the strategic part, and that's the most expensive in the longest term. Um, you know, it takes a long time to get that solved. So what's really exciting to me as a technologist, I've been in this industry for thirty-five years, um, the consulting side of our company, GSW, which, uh, Mark and I, uh, manage, um, we have another side to our company, GSW Telecom, that actually implements, um, does last mile fiber, does, uh, wireless solutions, large Wi-Fi networks. So we have a product set. We're a small company, but we really live on the consulting side. We actually do have the practical side of implementing these scenarios. So from a tactical side, I would definitely look at the partnerships between, uh, Russ, uh, excuse me, Russ and, uh, the various people that are on this, uh, group here that have access to the funding, um, the school districts, and then the state level. I think if you bring those four together, uh, you'll be in great shape, and I would be approaching, uh, Valley Telecom, Conterra, um, very quickly and looking at ways to use their already, um, long haul or middle mile networks to, to, to go get, um, and we can assist with shovel-ready projects, putting those very quickly to get into communities and assist you with that kind of preliminary engineering and budget numbers. And then I'd go after those. So that's what I would do. Um, uh, that's how I built time for telecom. It was a mile at a time. It was a customer at a time. And, uh, you know, honestly, we had fifty to seventy-five last miles that we strategized on every year, and we got about half of those done, and we had another ten or twenty that were surprises, came our way because of good luck or timing. So the plan gets you going there. So I would, that's tactically what I would do.
Thank you, Les. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. So, and Mylan, uh, because he asked for you, and who else did you ask?
Mr. Brownfield.
Mr. Brownfield. So, I don't know if Mylan's still on there. Okay. Maybe not. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Miletta. You have a question?
Mr. Chair, I, I just would like to see a, maybe a follow-up date to, to keep this really connected.
That's true. Gives us an opportunity to digest and then...
And that way you can do your research and, uh, look at possibilities for grants and, and all that good stuff we spoke of and, and, and have a follow-up here.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know I spoke to you guys individually, but I'm more than happy to, to share more information with you, uh, kind of distill some of those technical aspects of, of what's in the report and try to, um, maybe make it a little bit more clear to you.
Yeah, absolutely, Juan. I mean, look, we can sit down, we can discuss it, and then we can bring people to the table and, and, uh, whether it's Segal, whether it's Les, uh, you know, we'll bring people together and, and begin moving forward. So it's great to have a network roadmap, and there are things out there that are already happening. We just need to make sure that we continue to follow through. So with that, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our study session.
Whoop, adjourn.
Do I hear a second on the study session?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Finally, item K, uh, shall I entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved. Second.
Discussion hearing none. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And before we adjourn, everyone on the, uh, call today, thank you so much for participating, and we look forward to, uh, meeting again here in the not-too-distant future. So you all stay safe, wear your masks, social distance, and wash your hands. We all adjourned.[1799.21][1799.21]